Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the September 12th Board of Selectment Meeting. Could you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't have anybody indicate anything for public comment. We'll move on to approval of the warrant. Jason, do you have those?
Yes, I do. I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2311 in the amount of $186,064.34.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or any discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant 2311 in the amount of $1,675,739.35, which breaks down to the town, $106,179.68. Water and sewer, $10,675.29. Payroll withholding, $5,388.33. Light bills, $422,992.95. Grants and revolving, $97,863.18. OPEB appropriation transfer in, $85,000. And OPEB appropriation transfer out, $85,000. And Pentucket Assessment, $132,639.92.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous. Moving on. Approval of the minutes, February 15th.
I'll make a motion to approve executive session minutes for February 15th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mark, you weren't there, so you'll have to abstain. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Four in favor, one abstention. February 28th.
I'll make a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes for February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Yeah. Four in favor? One abstain. March 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve executive session meeting minutes for March 14th, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Four in favor? One abstain.
I'll make a motion to approve executive session minutes for March 28th, 2022.
March 28th. Is there a second?
A second on that.
Any discussion? None? All in favor? Dan?
Yeah.
I thought so. Four in favor? One abstain. May 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve executive session minutes for May 19th, 2022.
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion? Rebecca, you're going to take care of those. There was a couple of typos. Page two. One, two, three. Fifth paragraph. Not to change the now. And last paragraph, next to the last paragraph, the vote, 4-1-0. I wasn't at that meeting, so all abstain. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Four in favor? One abstention.
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes for August 1st, 2022.
Motion and a... Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
August?
August 1st.
Is it in the packet?
Yeah. You got two of the 19th.
Yeah, I had two.
I'm not there, so I won't be able to vote on it.
Yeah, I got that.
I can suck.
I don't have it.
You don't have it? Um...
It's in the packet.
August 1st.
Don't have it.
Just can't find it.
You haven't got them, Mark?
Yeah. I'll do right here.
Okay. You got it, I'll read it, otherwise, motion to stay.
Motion and a second. Kathy, you will miss that meeting.
I was not at the meeting.
Um, all in favor? Four in favor? One abstention. Appointments of the board? We don't have any discussion and possible vote. One-day liquor license, Jamie Mangamini, for an event October 15th, 2022, 3:30 to 9:30 PM, at Beezy Park, 201 Washington Street. We have all the paperwork on that. Any... Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Jamie Mangamini for October 15th, 2022, from 3:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous. One-day liquor license, Marlene DeJesus and Juan Garcia for an event October 22nd, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Beezy Park for reception. And we have all the proper paperwork on that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Marlene DeJesus and Juan Garcia for the event October 22nd at 3:30 PM to 10:00 PM.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous. A upper discussion, Pentucket Regional Bagman School Plumbing Evaluation. Rebecca, you had some information on it?
Just that I reached out to the engineer in regards to the request of the board to have an additional concept added to the options for review. And they just sent me back their analysis today. So I haven't had a chance to look at it and discuss with the facilities team with Pentucket in order to update the board. So I requested this item be added to the next agenda so that I can give a more thorough update, so that you have all the information before you.
Okay. Any comments? None? Okay, we'll add that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You go ahead. Go ahead, Dan.
For those that weren't at the last meeting, what was the additional? Was it just for drinking water lines?
It was just the lines from the existing or the new line that was run by the water and highway department about, I think, Mark, it was, what, 10 years ago? That line into the school for just a separate drinking water fountains.
Not replacing all existing plumbing, like...
Correct. There would be like the three options, as we discussed. One being that it would just be the fountains, the second being that it would be repiping the school, the third being replacing the connection into the building, and then the add alternates with the different facility upgrades as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll put that on, and hopefully, my next meeting will have some response. Premium pay for water and sewer union. Anybody?
I'll make a motion that we move that to the next meeting, because that was pending on the information from the plumbing evaluation.
Okay. Want to motion to table? Motion to table and a second. All in favor of the table on that? In unanimous. Field use application form revision and fee update. And Rebecca has provided us with a draft of a field use application. Any comments on that? Anybody? Looks pretty thorough.
Yes, I was working with Rennie Carroll, the highway superintendent, and putting that together as well. He had stated that he was going to try and jump on the meeting, but is having some trouble with the link.
Anybody?
Looks good.
Good. Go ahead, Kathy.
I like the form. I like the level of detail. We've never seen the breakout before that has the youth leagues with the one-time fee, adult teams, camps and clinics, which I assume are private camps and clinics, yes, $10 a player, non-resident groups and leagues. It really includes everything. My only other concern is with the use of the bathrooms down at the Pines Recreation Area that we have had some difficulty with the bathrooms being left in a dirty, disorderly manner, and that our maintenance people have to clean that up. And I didn't know if we should have either a cleaning fee or start to have them have to get the key from the dispatch when they're having a game and open the bathrooms up. I mean, if we reach the point where we just can't leave these bathrooms open, I don't know, but I don't think that it should be someone's job to have to clean up after somebody has really left a polluted mess in the bathrooms. I know, working in the schools, that's why we have students sign in and out of bathrooms, because we keep track of who's been in the bathroom and who's used the bathroom. And if there's a problem, we know who to go to. Right? With the Pines Recreation Area, it's been really nice that we've been able to put a bathroom facility down there. And unfortunately, I think there's been more than just a couple of occasions where the bathrooms have been left in a disgusting manner, and our maintenance people have to clean that up. So I think that we should give some consideration as to whether or not, going forward, depending on these types of incidences, can we just leave these bathrooms open all the time, or should they only be open when there is an actual event at the Pines Recreation Area? And there'd be people there to keep an eye on things. I'm just throwing it out there to the board for consideration.
Anybody?
I just think it's going to be kind of hard to control that, because like, if we keep them closed for all the children using the playground and stuff, I think that might be an issue, you know? And then, you know, it's just my thought.
I agree. I've never been big on punishing people for a couple people that are acting appropriately.
So... But the reality of it is that, unfortunately, this is something that, again, in every school, they monitor bathrooms for this reason. And we have a really nice bathroom facility down there, and I would really hate to see it really get damaged. I just feel that the incidents now keep occurring. There should be some kind of a log of this. And... I have no idea.
I don't think they realize they were probably not alive.
Yeah. So I, again, I'm not looking to punish anybody, but I think that our maintenance person who does clean the bathrooms, who is doing that, you know, and being paid a little extra for it, fine, but that kind of a mess is not what he signed up for.
Well, I think it'd be a little difficult with, like Mark said, that you got people down there using the playground. You've got, it seems like constantly, you've got people using the basketball courts. And to punish them for something that wasn't their fault, I don't see how you'd do that. The area is under camera. They should be able to, should be able to come up with something. But I don't see the right to be punishing the people not being able to use the bathrooms.
I agree with not punishing, but I also agree with that our maintenance staff should not have to clean up this type of mess. This is not okay. And to some degree, we have to, I think, make a statement about it, whether it's with signage or something, that, you know, if we do find it, people should report it. We can use the cameras and find out who used the bathrooms. That kind of thing. Just make sure people are keeping their eyes open and letting us know right away.
Anybody else? Mark?
Is there a way on this application, we could try to, you know, get whoever, if it's the baseball league, or just to have somebody kind of in charge to just to keep an extra eye on it? I don't, you know, it's just...
Possibly.
I mean, I've seen people just pulling in, you know, off the street, going to use it, which I just, I don't know how you would control who, you know...
I don't think that's probably the problem.
It's just like, wow. I just don't understand. I don't see how we're going to be able to, like, regulate it. Unless we can just hope that people just keep an extra eye on whoever's causing the issues. I mean, when I built those things, made it so you could go in there with a garden hose and just hose the whole place down, so it's unfortunate that people do that, but...
Dan, you want to weigh in?
Yeah. I'm just in favor of keeping them open. I mean, you know, a few bad apples will spoil everything, you know? I mean, we hope that it's a minimum. If it becomes a serious issue, then, you know, maybe we'll put the cameras right on the front door of the bathrooms. But until that happens, I think you keep them open. If somebody wants to bring their kids down to that playground, the jungle jam or shoot hoops, bathroom should be open. Tough to police public restrooms. So keep them open for now. We'll see what happens.
Rennie, did you want to weigh in?
Can't hear him. We can't hear him.
Hold on a minute, Rennie. We'll see if we can get a little volume on you. Try that, Rennie.
You hear me better now?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, I mean, we did have an incident down there, I think, last year, up to a few miles, did some damage to the bathrooms. You know, fortunate enough, we, you know, had the cameras and can kind of tell when that incident, you know, happened, as well as, I think, they videoed some of it, so it kind of put them in the spot at the time. But, you know, when you have a public bathroom at a playground or a park, it's kind of the risky run. I know we have, you know, really nice, brand-new bathrooms down there, so, you know, hopefully people respect them, and you hope that people treat them the way we would treat them, but that's not always the case. So, you know, maybe putting some signage up. I've also put some signs up down at the boat ramps, or I have some signs to put up down at the boat ramps in the parks where some of the vandalisms has occurred, just to let them know that they, that there is 24-hour video surveillance. You know, just them being aware of that maybe might curtail any future abuse. That's all I can really offer you.
Okay. So you're going to take care of some additional signage? You still with us?
Yeah, I'm still here.
You're going to take care of additional signage?
What's that?
You're going to take care of additional signage?
Yes. I already have, I already have the signs. I just haven't deployed them yet.
Okay. All right. So we have the field use permit before us, field permit, field use application. Anybody got any comments on that? Do we need a motion to accept it?
I make a motion to accept the field use application as presented this evening.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? None? All in favor? Unanimous.
Opposed.
Opposed. Opposed. Okay. Application for special event, property use permit for a special event. And Rebecca has provided us with a draft copy. Anybody read it over? Anybody, any comments on that? Rennie, did you want to weigh in on this special event property use permit?
I think they pretty much speak for themselves. This, you know, it basically, it holds people responsible when they're using the field. You know, the town spends a lot of money down there, taxpayers' money, keeping the field up, mowing it, Mark can attest to this, cleaning up after it, you know, picking up trash, you know? It's constant. So I think, you know, having these, these field use permits and, you know, having a small fee assigned to it is just the norm for most cities and towns. So I think we're just kind of getting on board with that. I think, obviously, it might be a little bit of a shock to some people, but that's, like I said, it's pretty much the average for every other city and town, and it's pretty, it's long overdue. So I'm obviously for it, because, you know, we're on the highway departments on the forefront of doing the maintenance and cleaning up. And, you know, we've done some work down there with upgrading the basketball hoops and the nets and so on and so forth, as well as, you know, we put new picnic tables down there, both at the boat ramps and at the pavilion. So I think we have started the process of really, you know, rejuvenating the pines. So, you know, obviously, with the dog park going on and the, you know, ability to have more events down there, I think it's just part of the process.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead.
What did we do before? What do we do now? Why the change?
I think it's the fees.
It's more than that. I mean, this is several pages of what I would refer to as red tape. So what, what did we do before? Was there an application before? Was it one page? Was it one sentence? I mean, what did we...
Rebecca, can you answer that?
What did we have before? If anything?
Yes, it was, there were two applications, one for special events and one for property use permits. Essentially, they contained very much the same information, but in the last application, it literally would just say, street public ways, closures, security details. It wouldn't provide any information underneath, so people were like, well, I don't know, does this apply to me, or does this not apply to me? Or, you know, well, I don't know, do I need a detail, or do I not need a detail? So really, the only thing that we did was we just put more information. So we gave the, you know, the police telephone number and say, did you discuss this with the chief of police? Did he have any issues? Instead of trying to track them down after the fact, we put something about the public ways and block parties and how, you know, the police and the prior applications wouldn't allow, you know, certain closures of certain types and noise levels. And we put down about how many police officers would be needed and rules about the propane tanks and what would require permitting. So it was really more so just adding some additional information so that people could understand whether or not they actually needed additional approval from other departments like a hawkers or peddler's license or a raffle license from the clerk. So they were all listed on the other application, but they were just kind of lumped together, and nobody really knew whether or not they applied. So the reason that the application is a little longer is that we just added a little bit more detail so that you could check off what applies and just not have what does not apply. And then we added the hold harmless and indemnification agreement, which was not on our original application as well, for the use of the town property for whatever event and/or special property use that they were having.
That answer the question, Dan?
Well, I mean, there's things on here like federal ID number. Previously, was there a million-dollar commercial general liability insurance and policy endorsement required?
There was a requirement, and then the actual application itself has said that it would be extended beyond if the board felt as though more coverage was necessary for the event and/or property use being proposed.
So is this, this for public use of property, or is it for having a special event in your backyard or something?
Only on public property, not on private property. So only when it involves town-owned land.
Where does it say that?
On the top.
And when you look at the requested locations, when you drop down, I know it says choose one, but it's a drop-down menu, and it'll show you, it'll say...
Gotcha. It says choose one, and I don't have the choices.
Then it would say, you know, Pines Recreation Area, Washington Park.
That's why I didn't see it. It's not on here.
You're going to also add something that, where they could add something in if it was not on any of the five areas. It'll be just...
It says like other.
It was on Main Street.
Yep. So if it says other, then they could put in the street or the public way that they're looking to utilize for a block party like they had in the last few applications.
So let me ask you this. Does there a number, number of participants require a threshold? Because let's just say you want to have a gathering with 20 people. You got to go get a commercial policy for a million dollars. You have to hire the fire department for $20 an hour. You got to hire a police officer for four-hour minimum, because I want to have 20 of my friends play softball on the pines.
So like you said, not all of those would apply. So if you would go down and you check off what would apply, so if you didn't, weren't closing off the street, you wouldn't say anything. If you were looking at security details, you would have already had the conversation with the police and fire chief that would have said none of that applies, so you could put the date discussed. So it's really just checking off what applies and then signing an application. It's not necessarily agreeing that you have to meet those. And then it still has to go before the Board of Selectment, as does the current application, to say whether or not you approve. So if they have to do a certificate of insurance, you could say, well, that clearly doesn't apply to the five of you looking to gather underneath the pavilion to hold a picnic. So there's ways that they don't necessarily need to comply with these requirements based upon each individual application review. It's just a general understanding. And I don't believe that we would require somebody looking to have a picnic of like five to six people to go through this process in general anyway.
Could we add language, if the board agrees, that subject to the Board of Selectment approve or land or waivers? Because I don't know that I want this to be hard and fast, one size fits all, you know? I mean, I think we should have some discretion over it for common sense purposes, if anything.
Well, there should, maybe there should be some kind of language, even in the field use application, that, I mean, nothing should prevent a father from going down and throwing a baseball with a couple of kids. And the same thing with the use of the basketball courts. There shouldn't be a group of kids in the neighborhood wanting to get together and play basketball. They shouldn't have to be doing a field use permit application or a special event permit for that.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
In terms of federal ID, is that just to be able to locate somebody? Could we substitute driver's license? And if we're going to have on applications tax ID numbers, that needs to be, it needs to be protected. I don't know that that should be on any document that's in the public domain there. So somehow, that needs to be impounded. If we're going to request that information, I think maybe, you know, C file or something there, and maybe they file a copy of their driver's license instead of that.
We can remove it, to be honest with you. The only, it's just a carryover from the existing application. So I just am just trying to keep it as familiar as I possibly could so that you didn't think we were trying to change too much, but I don't mind removing it. I don't really...
Well, it's not that I'm thinking you're trying to change too much, but in this day and age, it's prevalent identity theft. And when somebody has your social security number or your tax ID number, you don't get a new one. You get issued a PIN so you can file your tax return for the rest of your life. So it's a, it's a, it's a real problem, and everything should be done to safeguard privacy. So it's a, it's a, it's a real problem and everything should be done to safeguard privacy.
Anybody else? Kathy?
Yes. So if you read through it at the beginning, it says that this application just seeks to ensure that the applicant who is seeking to reserve some piece of public property for an event of some type has complied with the applicable laws of public safe, safety, health and order that the town already has, you know, so that nobody is impacted unnecessarily or in an adverse way by somebody reserving a public park or closing down a public street. And I think we've already seen, this has been kind of a mishmash affair at the meetings that I've seen it brought up at. We don't ever seem to have the information we need to make a decision. We usually end up tabling it and bringing it up again. In this case, you know, somebody wants to have a block party, it'd be very easy to see what they're doing and that they've already spoken to the police and that this street is, you know, okay to have a block party. And I think this just kind of consolidates everything and, and makes sure that if the board of health is involved, if somebody's bringing in a vendor with food, that they go through the proper steps with the board of health before it comes before us. So I don't see this as additional red tape. This is a consolidation and a cleaner statement of kind of the haphazard manner that we've been dealing with this. Kind of by flies in on the seat of our pants with a letter and then we're trying to figure out whether anybody's been informed about this. So I think it's a good form and we should start using it. And if there's things that have been brought in that we don't like or don't work well, we can always go back and revisit and revise it, but we need to start somewhere. So I would move to approve this application for special event property use permit.
Is that the motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, I, I do. I, I, I concur with Dan that any, any reference on the application to federal ID, social security number ought to be removed from there.
It's already been removed.
You're going to move it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Yes. For the record, Rebecca, if it's a short list, could you state for the record what the requested locations are on that choose one that's not front of us?
Yep. So it would be the Elm Park, 150 Center Street, Shanahan Field, Washington Park.
Can you get us back on there, Jason?
So unfortunately, it needs to be upgraded to the program in order to get this to the meeting, so...
We were trying to get the low cost version.
You gotta wait for IT basically to upgrade or whoever owns it.
Okay. Oh, well.
Public streets on there, Rebecca?
Public streets are not on there.
That would be...
So that would be on the...
Why not? Like a road race.
So it would be under other. Or I could put roadway.
Well, somebody that does like a charitable event for like a 5K, they would need police, fire and pay the fees and everything else.
Yep. So I would, I would assume they would put other and then they put the street that they're looking to do. But I can add roadways and if that's what you'd like to do as well.
Well, I just want to clarify it because to me it's ambiguous.
Okay. We can add roadways.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. We need to amend the, amend that probably.
Friendly amendments accepted. The remove, the friendly amendments are accepted, the removal of the ID and the addition of roadways.
And so it's added.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Are these fees increases or status quo? They exist or are they new?
Not exist.
Currently, there are no fees.
There's no fees.
Okay. All right. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? None. All in favor? Opposed. Four in favor. One opposed. Board of Selectmen policies and procedure. Rebecca, you have put all of our stuff together here in one packet.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. All I did was take the existing policies that I was aware of, that I could find and put them all in one location with the approved date and amended date if that applied.
Everybody read those, take a look at those? Any comments on them? Is there a motion?
These are already accepted.
These are what?
These have already been voted by prior boards. So there doesn't need to be...
Yeah. We don't need to vote on them because they're all policies. Anybody got any comments on them? None. All. Oh, go ahead.
Have we been following them?
No.
Well, let's talk about compliance and non-compliance, so. Until we know, we don't know, Kathy. What have we not been complying on?
Read through and enjoy.
Well, I'm looking here. Selectmen shall make exceptions to these rules only under extraordinary circumstances. How do you define extraordinary circumstances? It's like insanity. You know it when you see it, you know?
Read page three of 13.
Three of 13. All right. Help me out here. All right. Three of 13. Is it delineated? There's dots. Attendants at public meetings by board of selectmen. Oh, jeez, I missed a couple.
No, these are other meetings that we attend.
Yeah, I have the chair. All right. Chairman has discretion. Seems good. What an invitation to meet. The board of selectmen will issue invitations in intervals of 90 days to individual boards and commissions? I mean, what's the point of that? I mean, it ought to be a little more flexible than that. Do we do that every 90 days? I mean, some of this is archaic or rigid and I don't know why, but why would, why would this even be? This is dated August 11, 2014. Was I on the board back then? Or intervals of an estimated every 120 days. I just, I don't even know the point of it. So maybe we do need to talk about updating these.
Jason and I were going to work on that, but then you all tabled it.
Disposition of surplus goods, less than 10 grand. We had that come up on the council of aging van and I think that worked out because we traded it in. So I think that worked. Most of the time, we don't get any.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
If the board would be interested, I think our public comment policy is somewhat prohibitive. And I've looked at these kind of policies that are a little more straightforward and open in other towns and more of an invitation to the public than a prohibition telling them that they have to get approval and submit in writing whatever they're going to say and jump through a lot of hoops. I, I can see why the public doesn't want to come in and comment at our meeting. It's a pain in the neck.
It doesn't seem, doesn't seem to be a problem. We do get a few requests for public comment. Anybody's certainly free to make a request. Nobody that I know of has ever been denied. Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, it says here, you know, we'll have 15 minutes for resident public comment at each meeting, so. You know, depending on the subject, I think that ought to be with chairman discretion. And like you said, you've never excluded anybody, you know? You know, there may be a situation where there's 20 people saying the same thing, so somehow it needs to be efficient and that's within the chairman's discretion. And I think that's worked out.
I thought there was a sentence here on increasing it. But there's, Dan, I can't remember anybody that has gone to public comment and has taken more than 15 minutes to explain their position.
I don't think so. I think they state their piece and move on. The other thing here is we have a remote participation policy for persons that are unable to attend, for whatever reason, disability, illness, emergency, military service, maybe just geographic distance. So I think we've met all the accommodations for anybody that wants to address the board of selectmen and they have, they have access to us.
We lost our screen.
It is there, it's just there's nothing displaying.
Oh, okay.
Do you want me to turn it back on? I mean...
Do whatever you want.
If there's nothing on it.
If there's nothing up there...
Yeah, there's nothing to put up unless there's someone has like something to put up, but yeah.
I don't think so. Well, so you're satisfied, Dan, with that?
Well, the expected conduct, you know? It's funny, you know? Avoid causing disturbances or disruptions. Well, I would never do that. Use common courtesy. Absolutely. To not engage in any lewd or offensive behavior, never. Any form of violence is prohibited. Of course it is. And smoking, drinking or anything else. Makes me think of the old Jaws movie where, you know, the mayor is there, you know, he's got a button and the drag's like that long, ready to fall off. But it's 2022, so I think it's good.
Okay. All right. You're satisfied. And as was stated, Rebecca just put everything together and they're there. They've already been voted on.
Who says that?
Moving on. Discuss...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
But they're incomplete when you compare to other towns. And that was, again, the purpose that Jason and I had sat down wasn't because we were unaware of these policies, but because the board is missing comprehensive policies. I'm just putting that out there, that if the board wanted to have complete policies that govern it, you should look at what other towns have had put together.
This seems like it worked for us.
I think it works for some of you well.
Excuse me?
I think it works for some members of this board very well.
Okay. All right. Moving on. A discussion on the shared streets grant for Elm Square mural. And I asked Rebecca to put this on the, on the agenda. Talking about the, the painting down on Main Street by Stock and Kronk and the Sweet Paws, the dog rescue place. A lot of comments about it. People want to know who approved this? Why is it there? It, it doesn't belong in the, in the Town of Groveland. If this was, if this was ultra, if this was in the city of Lawrence, somebody'd be arrested for graffiti, destruction of malicious damage to town property. It, it's, it just, in my opinion, and in all the complaints that I've got, it doesn't belong in Groveland. And maybe Rebecca can give us a rundown on, on how this was approved. The selectmen never voted on it. And if it, if something's going to be painted on the street, the selectmen ought to be voting on that. But go ahead, Rebecca, maybe you can give a rundown on...
So the mural is part of the shared streets grant that we awarded from Mass DOT. The Elm Square Committee was the applicant that put forward the project. This was specifically for the connection to be enhanced so that we could better advertise and connect to the newly constructed or soon to be constructed rail trail. Currently, there's no way to safely access the existing infrastructure. 113 is a state highway. They only have a sidewalk on one side of the road. To construct a sidewalk is very costly. So this was an interim approach to try and enhance pedestrian activity creatively downtown and to invite people to walk in a safely delineated path to the existing infrastructure from the sidewalk along Merrimack, Merrimack River, over onto Main Street and get them away from the parking spaces that people are pulling out of and onto the existing sidewalk in front of Stocking Kronk. And then to get over safely to the other side where we're constructing that other sidewalk and then up to TD Bank to cross from TD Bank over onto the other side of Main Street to safely get you up to the Pines Recreation Area and the town hall complexes. So the art installment is temporary. It is not long term. It is only meant to provide, again, a safe delineated walking space for pedestrians and give us an understanding of what it would look like to have a more permanent installment. Currently, Sweet Paws, the way that their operation is, they currently sit right up on the roadway and the right of way, so it's very difficult to construct a sidewalk. And we wanted to see exactly what that would look like if we were to try and construct a sidewalk and how we could safely make that pedestrian connection. As to the artwork itself, the artwork was performed by Alexander Golub, who was paid for as part of that shared streets grant. No town funds were used. And again, it is a temporary installment. And while I know that there's been some negative feedback, I've also heard a lot of positive feedback. And it was not really necessarily theme related. There's a lot of colors for the point of trying to make it as neutral as possible to the theme of Groveland and just giving a little bit more of attraction so that people were not thrown off when they saw the delineators and that they knew that there was something different. So people would slow down and it would become more of a traffic calming mechanism so that people could still provide that safe space and also get used to the change.
When's the permanent sidewalk going in?
Hopefully, we'll be able to see a permanent sidewalk in the next few years, but not within the next two to three.
Okay. Anybody else? Dan?
Anyone have a picture of this? I have not seen it. What is it and what is the theme?
Just colors. It's just colors, Dan, on the road. It's, I mean, if I can speak...
Are people going to drive by and be distracted by the colors on the road? Is that going to be more of an attractive target fixation thing and more of a safety hazard? Because if it is, then it shouldn't be there.
Where do he finish us?
Yeah, well, he has...
He's asking a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it more of a problem than it's worth? I mean, if it's going to be an attractive target fixation thing, like, hey, what's that in the middle of an intersection? You're going to hit something. So maybe it's not the brightest bulb on the tree. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I have seen it and I drive that way all the time. And I have not received any complaints from my neighbors or the people who I see on a regular basis when I take a walk and I go down along Lower Main Street as well. One thing I will say, it does slow people down, which is a good thing for that turn because that's a wide turn and people were taking that turn on two wheels at times. And there's a lot going on there now. You know, there's people going for walks, there's children riding bikes. It's not in an intersection. It's as you make the turn onto the one way street. It's really bright, so I'm sure it's shaking things up a little bit, but I think as kind of a preamble to the fact that we are going to have to slow traffic down so that people can safely traverse across town and get to these parks is, is a realistic thing. I mean, the way people drive now, I think we, we need to be concerned. This town is a beautiful town and children do ride their bicycles down these roads. And people need to be aware as they drive through these roads that potentially there are children and baby carriages and other things because there's not sidewalks everywhere all the time and you do have to cross. So I think, you know, it's, it's, it's okay for now. It doesn't offend me in any way. I know it's created a little bit of a problem for this, for the dog people because of accessing, but I do feel that it does do the one thing, it slows people down as they make that turn because it's very clear that you're not supposed to go into the area where the color is or keeps the people away from the buildings and causes them to slow down on that turn, which I think is a good thing.
Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah. I, I think it's a very good thing because it separates the street from where people can actually walk and get to the businesses down there. And it, it aids in supporting the businesses that we have down there and bringing new businesses in. It's a very common practice that is different. If you remember when they were talking about sharing parking and how they were going to market, they were talking a lot about doing that with painting... and how they were going to market, they were talking a lot about doing that with painting different things in different parts of the street to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And the whole goal of that was to push people to walk and make them more comfortable walking around downtown to get to and from the businesses. So I think it's a good thing, and I think it's actually helped quite a bit, particularly where it's at, because when you drive down Main Street on that particular spot on Main Street, it looks like it's a two-way street. Now, not so much, since it's been divided up and painted.
Anybody else?
Yeah, what do the butters think? Are they happy about it? I mean, did anyone ask them?
Can't answer that, do you know?
They were involved in the process. Greg Stark was on the Elm Square Committee. I know he had questions about the parking in relation to the mural, but not necessarily utilizing the mural itself. I know that we had also talked to Applied Graphics, who owns the building that the Tumbling Academy and Sweet Paws are in. I know Sweet Paws was very appreciative of the project, although has expressed some concerns about operation mechanism, like we said, for them unloading and doing their day-to-day adoptions and things that they do, but were overall supportive of the project. And then we also notified the property owners with the sidewalk going in in front of Hart and Stone, and he's actually signed off and wrote a letter in support. We've also talked to TD Bank. TD Bank also wrote a letter in support of the project. So there had, the butters were notified, and again, I think the major concern that was relayed to us was just operationally, it takes a very wide one-way and shrinks it down and then puts the parking towards the center. So is that going to be problematic? And, you know, as people adjust, is that going to cause an issue? And can we still drive our trucks up on top of it if it's a pedestrian area? So I think really it was more of concerns and questions about implementation as opposed to the actual mural and project itself.
How does it work? If somebody used that as parking or an unloading zone, have they lost that access to the, to those buildings adjacent to it?
They haven't lost access. They're still, like, can pull up within the door frame of the actual building itself and walk down the stairs and unload properly, and they still have the loading area on the side when you're pulling into the back to the Tumbling Academy, where they can turn around in a big parking lot and come out the other side and come the right way, because it is a one-way, and there's a lot of problems with people trying to go the other way because it's a shorter travel route.
All right. Now, as an alternative, you know, I've seen bike lanes in other towns, and they have, I don't know what you call them, but they're like posts that kind of move. They're on some sort of pedestal, and I don't know if they're made out of PVC or something like that. Has that, has that been looked into as an alternative?
They're on there.
They are there?
Yep, they're there.
They're already there, okay. Again, I haven't seen it. I don't know if you...
Well, when you take a look at it, if you still have any questions, we can...
Yeah, I mean, the issue is, is it offensive to some people? Could it be toned down if you still had those, help me out with it, those delineators?
Very good.
You know, is there some sort of compromise solution that'll accomplish safety access and not be too, too bright? Because it is Groveland, and it's kind of green and nature and earth tones. That's all. Thank you.
I just have a problem where the parking spaces have been moved out, which now basically is now almost the middle of the road. So somebody coming around the corner, not expecting to see him there, and I've only seen him used a couple of times. I'm sure there's more than that. But I just, I just think someone's going to wipe out a parked car when they're coming around a corner. I just think they ought to, the parking spaces should be moved in a little bit towards the building. So, and I know the idea, narrow the road, go a little bit slower, but they're coming off the bridge, making a right turn, and they run smack into a parking space that they don't expect to be in the middle of the road. And I think that's a little dangerous.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
I knew the rail trail would be a lot of trouble. That was, you know, just coming down the road, you know? I don't know why the rail trail didn't have adequate parking so people could park and that they could get where they're going without us causing problems, but...
Mike's working on it.
This is the ripple effect of the law of unintended consequences, so here it comes, and there's going to be more, you know? I don't know why we can't get some white paint out and just make some, you know, pedestrian bike lanes, you know? But most of our roads aren't wide enough unless you go down Bear Hill Road or maybe Rawlins, something like that, but that should have been the way to go. But I guess we ran out of white paint, so now we've got colored paint, and we're blocking access to businesses. Thank you.
Mike, you got any of that?
I'm just curious what we're going to do in the middle of winter, because that whole area is a pain to plow. I did it for 10 years.
The delineators will be removed, and they'll be able to plow exactly as they were in the past. So it's only really for when there's no snow on the ground. So the first sight of snow and those delineate posts are gone, and signage will be there to make sure that pedestrians are aware.
Okay. I don't have to deal with it, so.
Not yet. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Town administrators time. Rebecca, do you have anything?
I just have two things, Mr. Chair. First, I just wanted to thank Lisa Chandler and the Groveland Day Committee for all their hard work in organizing Groveland Day and the Groveland Day 5K. I thought it was a huge success, and we've also started conversations and are looking forward to partnering with them on maybe some future seasonal type of community events, such as bringing back Pumpkin Festival, that was very well-received in the past, so we're really excited about that. But first and foremost, to thank them for all of their hard work, because it's not an easy thing to put together, and I think a lot of the people were very happy and pleased that we were able to get together in that fashion, and it was a gorgeous day, a little hot, but it was still a lot of fun. So I wanted to thank them specifically for all of their work. And then also, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Ferry Festival is this weekend at Beezy Memorial Park, September 17th and 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's a really cute event. I took my kids last year, and they had a blast.
Had a blast. That sounds kind of dangerous.
No, it wasn't. It was a good time.
Probably.
Okay, thank you. Selectmen time. Kathy, do you have anything?
No, just sorry that I had to miss the Groveland Day. I was able to get into Boston and to see my son Andrew, who has been on tour for, I don't know, nine months now. He was coming through Boston with the tour group. So always fun to reunite with family. Got to see my nephew as well, so it's great to see family. And I know that my children who grew up in this town, they still talk about at some point wanting to come back to Groveland. So I think that that's the kind of mark that Groveland leaves on people. You know, it's home. It's beautiful, and like to see that we can all be supportive of it as we move forward. I know that sometimes things get put in, it's a different color, there wasn't the same color, and we get a little like, whoa, there's some color. But maybe step back for a minute and take a look at the whole picture of everything that's being done in Groveland and how hard people are working, and understand that in large part still it's driven by volunteerism. We do have working, you know, Highway Department, Water and Sewer, but we have such small staff, and we have such high volunteerism. And, you know, if you see something change and you wonder about it, maybe get involved would be my recommendation and have some input. Thank you.
Jason?
Yes, I've got a couple of things. The first is the Groveland Historical Society presents the 19th Annual Pine Speedway Reunion, which will take place Saturday, October 1st, between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And then the other thing is, I've had the fortune or misfortune of stopping at several accidents in Groveland and watching the fire department and the police department respond. And I've always been impressed at how professional, quick, and really just what a great job they do. But you really don't appreciate it until somebody that you know was in the, in the accident. So I had that misfortune recently, and I'd just like to thank the police and fire for all that they do.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm good.
Dan?
Yeah, I'm thinking about the town and how we can get more participation in the election process, and I thought about maybe we could explore maybe moving the elected officials' terms to November. Seems like people come out in droves for statewide elections and national elections. I know we have a fiscal year. I know we have town meeting, but wouldn't bother me if they somehow straddled that, but would get more than a couple hundred people coming out on a off-year for a May election. I'll predict people come out for the gubernatorial race and the other races in November, and they didn't come out in May or May last year. So just food for thought on that. And I know we don't usually talk politics on this board, and some people object to it, but for the record, I am not a threat to democracy, despite what our president says. So I take offense to the demagoguery. So that's for the record. I am a MAGA Republican, and I'm not a threat to anyone, and we shouldn't get that from the top down. Thank you.
Okay, I just have one thing. Rebecca, still getting complaints about violations of the Water Department water ban. If we can get a list from the water superintendent on, you know, how many violators, who's he got violating? Have anybody been fined? Anybody? What's been their response so far? Other than that, that's all I got. All their unfinished business. They don't have anything. Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. I don't think we got anything. Correspondence, we have the Pine Speedway reunion, and we have paperwork from the town accountant on some financial information. And if nobody has anything else, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
There are a second. Thank you, Mark. Motion and a second, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mike.